Vicky Danberg. Vicky has an MBA in Finance and Management and is the Healthcare Administrator. She has been a Ward 6 Councilor-at-Large since 2004. Her main concerns for next term are housing, good zoning plan, infrastructure upgrades, the environment, and local business health. Second, we have Alan Leibowitz. He is a retired physician and Newton resident for 40 years. He was former President of Southborough Medical Group and Board Member of Atreus Health and Reliant Medical Group and the Co-Founder of GAN Academy. Alan has experience in management, finance, and strategic planning. Alicia Bowman is a City Councilor running for her third term. She is a longtime advocate for safer streets, bold action on the climate and addressing the housing crisis. Alicia has an MBA and has lived in Newton for 27 years with her husband Jeff. So, thank you. With that, I will turn it over to Margie.
Right, thank you so much. Alan, I guess you get the first question. Could you please give us a sense of what your top three priorities are for the city and why?
The first thing that I've learned through this campaign is that we have to listen to the residents. I don't think that the leadership in this city, including the present councilors, are doing a good enough job to outreach to the residents when major issues come up and listen to them when we are considering various policies. I've learned this through talking to residents, including community leaders, volunteer community leaders, that work on a variety of projects, including the woods, the rivers, the lakes, the playing fields, et cetera, and going to meetings where I've heard residents being very upset about various policies. Second...
Your time is up.
Oh, sorry.
Did you hear the little tweet?
No, I didn't.
Okay.
Can I just mention the other two?
No, no, because we have to stick to...
Sorry, sorry.
Vicky.
Sure.
Yes, my three topics are funding the schools, infrastructure, and housing. On funding the schools, we have an issue of COVID catch-up. One of the most important things that we can do for a child is to make sure that they are up to date with their fellow students, and I think that we need to pay attention to this. We need to address inequity in the schools, attract and keep schoolteachers, and address the decline in public school population. On infrastructure, we've got roads and sidewalks. We are halfway through our water storm, water sewer, stormwater program, but we need to look at bike amenities and bike safety.
Thank you. Alicia?
I have had the same three priorities the four years I've been on the council: housing, climate, and transportation. We have to support the creation of more housing to address the critical housing crisis, especially more affordable housing, which will require more funding. I was pleased to read about the Governor's Transfer Fee Proposal. It could be used to fund affordable housing, and Newton has previously supported that. Climate: we need to ensure Newton's able to participate in the Ten Communities Act, which allows us to require full electrification in all new substantially renovated buildings, and we need to move forward on BERTA, which will help us address the reduction of energy use by our largest property owners. And lastly, transportation. I've been a transportation advocate for 20 years. We need to give Newton residents options to get out of their cars and use public transportation. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, let's get to what may be the most challenging topic that is facing us: rezoning and the two plans to achieve it. Very briefly, as you know, over the last few years, the administration and the City Council have been drafting new higher-density zoning to meet two goals. First, to fulfill the state's MBTA Communities Act. Newton was mandated to rezone for 8,330 units. Second, in addition to that act, Newton has been working on the Village Center Overlay District, rezoning to invigorate our village centers and maintain capacity for more residential units, emphasizing walkability and reduce vehicle use. As the rezoning proposal has been modified and as the state has changed, which units can be counted, local residents have heard proposals ranging from as high as 15,000 new units to as low as 7,300 to 9,300. The fluidity of the numbers has been a challenge. At the Wabbin Library last week, the counselor who has been at the helm of this lamented that some of these numbers have been used to terrify people, but she also said that the state's formula is flawed. So, the question is, and let's start with you this time, Vicky. What are the voters to make of all this? And what number do you have in your head in terms of what the proposal will generate?
Okay, well, first of all, we need to understand that the numbers that come from the state are dramatic overcounts of what would ever, ever be built. It is the 177 community, 8,330, number is a number that must be allowed, but it has nothing to do with what would ever get built. One thing we need to look at is that if you take out, for example, this number assumes that we've got land with no houses on it. If you remove the houses, the parking, and all the other issues, you come up with probably around 4,000 possible units that could be built.
Thank you, and thank you for being specific. Alicia?
Thank you very much. So, you know, I'd start back, take a big step back and say, I hope that we all agree that there is a housing crisis. Globe is doing an excellent job with their Spotlight reporting on this. We've had an incredibly low production number of houses produced since 1960 and especially since 1987. We are, and this is why the state has required the 177 communities that are serviced by the MBTA to loosen their zoning to allow a little more housing. Not only are we impacting people's ability to have housing, but we're impacting the ability of the state to meet economic goals. We are producing, we have many more jobs, new jobs, than we have new houses, so.
Alan?
Yes, I was in a meeting for Ward 2 at Newton North, and it was clear from the councilors that presented that we are talking about a minimum of 15,000 new units, and it was, and that doesn't include future plans that the council is now considering, and it doesn't include large developments like Riverside or Northland. So, we are talking about many thousands of units, and I would say we are not considering the downsides of building that number of units, particularly as it affects the number of cars, the traffic, planning for schools, et cetera, green space, the environment, and we need to consider all of those in the number.
Okay. Alicia, you will get to go first this time, and so let's pick up where Alan left off. Some have called for fiscal impact analysis before any zoning is voted on. That analysis could include infrastructure impact, schools impact, et cetera. To what extent do you agree with that call for an impact analysis? Or would you expect that the impacts of upzoning will be gradual and can be taken care of over time? So, Alicia?
First, as a member of Land Use, I've had a front row seat to look at the projects that we have required an impact analysis on, whether it was Riverside, or Northland, or even 34 units that are currently being built on Beacon Street and Four Corners. All of these analyses are very conservative in their estimate of improving, you know, increases in income coming to the city and quite high on expenses, yet they're all positive. Someone asked me to calculate the impact of, you know, a project like Trio and are surprised that it's bringing in, you know, at least a million and a half dollars to the city every year just in property taxes alone. So, I see this as being...
You finish your sentence.
Financially, I see this type of doing coming gradually, but also being financially positive for the city and necessary to our increased growth. Thank you.
Alan, you want to weigh in on... Oh, you already...
No. I didn't.
Requiring the fiscal, the impact analysis before voting on the zoning itself.
Well, unfortunately, we won't have time for that unless there's a way to reverse the final vote, because the final vote will come before the end of the year, and I'm very concerned about that because it will be hard, it will be hard to reverse it. That's why I particularly favor limiting the number to the state requirement of 8,330 before we go on to do any more, and noting the impact of those housing and how quickly it's developed before we approve further housing, except, the exception is for affordable housing.
Yeah, go ahead. Vicky?
Yes, I believe your question included infrastructure also and the impact on that and schools and other things. We have enough capacity in our infrastructure. We've been working on it now for 10 years out of 20. We're halfway there, and in another 10 years, we will have stopped all of the leakage in the main pipes that we're laying. Schools are declining in population. We desperately need students. We had 17,000 in the 1970s and 80s. We now have 11,500, and we're losing 700, we're losing between 200 and 250 a year and another 700 to 750 in the next four years. On traffic, traffic does not come from housing. It comes from commuters.
All right.
Did I hear the bell?
Yeah, you did, in my frantic waving. A major concern is the lack of affordable housing. To what extent would the plans, if passed in their current form, address the need for specifically affordable housing? And Vicky, you get to go first on this one.
The only way that this city, or any city, is going to get affordable housing is through the Inclusionary Zoning Act, which requires that a certain percentage of any development over seven units, over six units, actually seven units kicks it in, requires either a pay-in-to or production of affordable units. It's at 20 units, it's at one level, and I think it's 15%, 15 and a half percent, and at 100 units, it's at 20%. So, we're going to get 20% affordable units every time we are able to build 20 more or 21 or more units. These units are absolutely necessary. They are the only way we're going to get them. Developers make their money, even small developers on luxury homes. We have to force the legislation and force developers to do it in larger developments. Thank you.
Alicia?
Oh, thank you. So, I agree with...
You'll get 10 extra seconds, too.
Oh, it's okay. So, inclusionary zoning, there's a lot of confusion about this. It applies to all development happening today, and it will apply to anything that we rezone under the Village Centers. And Counselor Danberg is right, is that, you know, it varies by number of units, and it's all based on, you know, deep economic analysis, and it's actually due for review this coming year. But it is a good way that we do get, we get housing. We get units, actual units created that are deed restricted for a lifetime, and we get cash. For partial units or for units, probably seven to nine units, people typically pay us in cash. This money is split between the Affordable Housing Trust and the Newton Housing Authority to be used to maintain the affordable housing that we have. Another way that we can create affordable housing is by making it easier and more predictable to build. We may attract some nonprofit developers to develop, redevelop properties in our Village Centers. Thank you.
Yes, I don't think that the current approach is adequate. We have many people who are low-income, who wouldn't even qualify under the guidelines that are being referred to. We need a strategic plan to create truly affordable housing in the city. We need to assess where that could be, what partnerships and what funds are available, and we need a strategic approach to creating affordable housing. It's not simply enough to just have the inclusionary rules.
Margie, may I respond to that?
Yes, quickly, please.
Yeah, so I'm on the Affordable Housing Trust, and the Affordable Housing Trust is working on just that, what we can do to better fund our most deeply affordable. But we need money, and we don't have the money in the current budget to support that. So, I think development is critical to supporting affordable housing.
Can I respond to that?
Yes, but let me use that as a jumping-off point, because there's talk nowadays about a real estate transfer tax on homes, depends on how they're set, but could be on homes in Newton as low as a million dollars. Do you favor getting some of that revenue from the real estate transfer tax? And if so, how much of a tax are you willing to impose? Alan?
Well, in general, I would favor that, but I'd have to look at the details. For many people who own even smaller homes that are worth a million dollars, they are in fixed incomes, and I think we have to think carefully about how we would do that if we were to consider it. But the point that I wanted to make was that this city, as far as I know, is not making the effort to attract commercial real estate, which pays 1.75, according to what I've heard, 1.75 the rate of residential. Towns around us are making that kind of effort, and we have fallen behind. We have not devoted the resources, again, to a strategic plan to address attracting commercial real estate.
Vicky? On the real estate transfer tax or...
Yes, I just signed on to that as a supporter. We obviously would have to shape it and see how it would actually work. I would also say that people on fixed incomes would not be affected by that, Alan, because it's only upon sale of a house that this has kicked in. I would put a 1% tax on, off the top of my head. I want to hear what other people might have to say, but I live in another place, I grew up in another place rather, that has a 1% tax, and I have paid it, and it goes toward affordable housing. I think that this is certainly something that needs to be looked at and shaped, but I am in favor of the idea.
One final question on this rezoning.
I didn't answer the question on that. Thank you. So, thank you. I supported the original resolution from the city, supporting a transfer tax. I think the government Achilles' Plan is bold. I have some questions about how it will impact the whole state, but as it impacts Newton, I think it's great. I think it will help residents feel more comfortable when they see, number one complaint we get is developers coming in, tearing down a house, and then rebuilding a bigger home. So, we'll get a transfer tax on when it's sold, and we'll get a transfer tax after it's redeveloped and sold again, and this money could be put forward to affordable housing. I will also say that we should keep in mind when we're talking about commercial development that when apartment buildings, more than six units are also commercial. So, Trio is a commercial building, and that is paying significantly more taxes than if it were homes. Thank you.
Okay, well, we could go on talking about the rezoning probably for the rest of our time, but I wanted to switch to the whole subject of green spaces. And where are the green spaces, both in your home ward and elsewhere, that are particularly vulnerable to development and need steps to preserve them? Alan, let's start with you this time.
Well, I think the first thing is to preserve the green spaces that we have. And secondly, I think that there need to be modifications in the residential zones under the MBTA, so-called MRTs, to assure that not just a portion of the property is open space, because open space can just be paved over, but that actually a significant portion of the property can be green space. And related to that, the preservation of older trees. We need to look at other areas of the city that, where we might have options to preserve space.
Sorry, we will come back to trees.
Okay.
I guarantee that.
Thank you.
Alicia?
Yeah, so when I think about our green spaces, I think about places like Cold Spring Park and Crystal Lake and other spaces that need investment. We need investment in removing invasive species, in maintaining the tree canopy and the healthy function of that, and making those spaces more accessible. I'm very proud of the work that was done on Livingston Cove at Cold Spring, I'm sorry, at Crystal Lake, to make that space more accessible and to make it, to preserve the water quality at Crystal Lake. And I agree with Alan that by keeping our neighborhoods a little more green would be great, and our tree canopy, we just have to be careful about how we do it.
Vicky?
Yes, I am also very much in favor of keeping all of the tree canopy that we can. We need to look at new construction and saving the, doing everything that we can to save the existing mature trees that we have, because it takes many, many years for a tree to grow. I think we need to look at invasives and make sure that we're not saving invasives. The Norway maples, for example, are all over the place. We need to look at not penalizing, for example, one-to-two-family homeowners by, if they need to add a kitchen or add a bedroom, we need to make sure that we exempt them from the need to pay into a fund or pay a fine.
I'm sorry, we're out of time on that, but I want to ask you, how do you envision the best use of pending development of the property at 528 Boylston? Alicia, why don't you go first this time?
Sure, so I did have the pleasure of meeting with neighbors there and seeing firsthand what it feels like to stand in the backyard of those properties and look over its current use, and I certainly feel like there is definitely a solution there that is better than the smell of mulch and that feeling of stone dust coming onto you even when it wasn't open. But I do appreciate that there is concern about, you know, a high-rise development, you know, being there. I was really intrigued by the plan that was put forward for the property behind this, that would have been a series of townhomes for the, you know, off of Dudley Road, as the city was considering that, and so I do wonder if something that might better fit in with the neighborhood.
Vicky?
Yes, I would also say that I think that the solution to this is not a very large building, but the townhomes would certainly fit into the area. It would add homes for people, and it would certainly be a better fit than some of the things that have been proposed. Right now, what is there is not optimal for any neighborhood, and I think that the neighbors are looking to try and find a solution, as is the city, and I think that a solution can be found.
Alan, have you gone on to this?
No. So, you know, I also oppose massive building in that area, and I do think we need to listen to the, again, listen to the neighbors to see what they think might be best, but overall, I would agree with Alicia and Vicky in the approach.
Right. How do you all feel about the transportation options currently available in Newton? Their proposals to encourage residents to use public transit, ride bikes, and walk, and they do it by reducing parking requirements and redesigning streets for pedestrians and cyclists. Do you support these measures, or would you pursue a different approach if elected? Alan, go first this time.
Well, I certainly support this approach. Again, my issue, we get back to the zoning and/or the upzoning and the creation of thousands of units, and how that would impact all of these great, you know, ideas in terms of pedestrians and people who ride bicycles. I just worry, and again, I think we need to stop at the 8,330, and we need to look at the impact of any further housing beyond that, including the impact on the areas that you just mentioned: pedestrians, bicyclists, even drivers, particularly focusing on safety issues.
Alicia?
Thank you. So, transportation has been my wheelhouse for many years, so I support giving our residents options. Let's make it easier to walk and bike, and we do that by making the streets safer. We do that by bringing more stores and amenities closer to where people live. I'm, you know, strongly supportive of creating more housing so that people can get out their front door and get immediately where they want and need to go, especially, I think this is especially important as we think about seniors and aging, and many people will live long beyond when it's safe for them to drive. I also think by making it easier to walk and bike, we will make it possible for more people to use public transportation, because they will be able to walk and bike to transportation hubs. Thank you.
Vicky?
Could you repeat the question, the final question? I'm not sure I caught it correctly.
Do you support measures that would reduce parking requirements and redesign streets all as part of an approach to encouraging cycling and walking and taking public transit?
Oh, absolutely. I think that back 30, 40, 50 years ago, we went out of our way in this city and all over the Boston area, all over Massachusetts, in fact, to make it easier to use our cars and get around more easily. We in Newton, in fact, we cut our curbs back so that we could make it easier for cars to get around. I think that it's very important to us to make sure that we redesign, continue to redesign our streets so that we can encourage bike use, encourage pedestrians, make it easier and safer for pedestrians and bikers to get around, and discourage the use of cars as much as we can.
Thank you. The city has $40 million in surplus funds. The mayor proposed putting a large amount of that into a new Operations Booster Stabilization Fund. The City Council turned her down. So, can you explain the dispute, and what do you think that we should do? And we are going to start off with Vicky.
Got it with me, did you say?
Yes.
Thank you. I voted no on this, to the surprise of many of my colleagues, and the reason that I voted no was that we have a tremendous need in our schools right now, post-COVID, where children have fallen behind, and in fact, a very large percentage of children have not done in their, on their MCAS anywhere near the way they should have. What we need to do is address these needs immediately. We can do it by helping, by creating a program, let's say, for a couple of years so that we can get these children back up to snuff, and then we can look at, we can also look at, what is the cost of Lincoln Elliott? Because costs have gone up. Once we know that, we'll be able to better understand what we have left and what we have to spend.
Okay, Alicia?
So, I would just add on to what we heard from Counselor Danberg, is that many of us voted against this proposal because we believe that a little money now and a lot of money later, which was what the mayor's plan was, start outs at half a mil- start out at half a million and it ends up, um, it's something, I think, close to eight million. Um, it was not, would not meet today's needs. We've had an issue, we've known we've had an issue uh, since COVID, that we have children that are falling further and further behind. And I could not explain to somebody whose, whose child last year did not do well on MCAS in seventh grade, why we're not going to put serious funding in until they're in college. Uh, we need to level fund this. Uh, we could fund something more like twenty teachers or two point two million dollars to schools today and keep that going at five percent and increase uh, over time and still have uh, just money. Thank you.
Alan, do you want to weigh in on that?
Well, I, I would, I would have voted against it as well, um, actually for the same reason. But in terms of future funding, I think that we have to take our lead from the new superintendent. She is the expert on education. She is the ex, she said her top, her top goal is improving the quality of education. And I think we have to listen to her plan to do that and ask appropriate questions. But ultimately, if uh, if that is convincing, and I believe it will, we have to find the funds that will support her in um, in, in the priorities that she determines that will improve the quality, whether it's um, hiring new teachers, more assistance, whatever it is. And of course, the teachers uh, right now need the support, all the support that they can get.
This is not unrelated. Uh, instead, this is, this question is the gift that keeps on giving. Uh, is the city adequately funding its OPEB or post-retirement health benefits uh, liability? Uh, if not, what would you do differently? And let's broaden that to talk about perhaps three things that you might do to um, put Newton's finances on an even more solid footing. And Alicia, you're due for, to go first.
Excellent. So um, I actually think we're in pretty good shape uh, given the priorities that we're willing to fund now. I, I wish the override had passed. I voted for it and I was a strong supporter of it. Um, I think we'd be in better shape. Um, and I expect that we will see another uh, override come forward. But we are on track to fund our pensions first by 2032, which will free up uh, cash that hopefully will be able to direct to the city and then also direct to our OPEB. Um, I'm more concerned, and I think the best way we can do to make ourselves more financially stable is by um, allowing more development. Uh, we are held to two and a half percent growth of, of tax levy. Um, and we, this year, we were plus new growth and we will have our smallest new growth percentage uh, since in record ti- in all the time since um, Prop two and a half was passed, and that's a critical issue.
Thank you. Alan, do you want to go next?
Sure. I mean, the, there are elements to uh, fiscal responsibility. And the first one is to look at how we're spending money. Um, we need to look at the budget and our expenditures with a fine-tooth comb to see in what areas we can actually cut or we don't need in the future. The second thing, as we talked about, is increasing revenue. So I do support increased housing. But as I mentioned before, we need to focus on development of commercial space. Um, and as Alicia pointed out, Trio is paying a lot of money into our coffers. We need to expand that effort and have a strategic plan related to commercial space. Um, and the last thing is, um, how are we spending our money?
That's, I will have to leave that at a rhetorical level right now. Vicky?
Um, I agree with a lot of what has been said. Um, I think that we have a good plan in place. We had a nine point six percent increase prior to the pension board reducing it to six point six, and the mayor has now um, suggested that, that we uh, we move it to five percent to give more wiggle room um, in what needs to be funded on, on a yearly basis. I see some good points to that, but um, I think that we need to take care of our capital needs uh, and our children's COVID catch-up needs first. Um, again, we have some flexibility with uh, knowing, once we know what Lincoln Elliott is going to cost. Um, but we need to balance uh, the OPEB um, payment. And, and we will pay it back by 2032. We need to balance that with current school needs.
Uh, okay, I wanted to ask you if any of you see uh, possible revenue coming by expanding pilots, payments in lieu of taxes from nonprofits. Uh, let's start with you, Vicky.
We have been dealing with this for the twenty years that I've been on the board. Um, we haven't gotten uh, very far with it. Um, we uh, uh, Boston College, for example, pays a much, much higher uh, percentage um, to the town of Boston because half of the colleges in Boston, then they, then they pay to us. I think a couple of years ago, it was only a hundred thousand dollars, um, which is a ridiculously low uh, pittance um, coming from a place like B.C., a wealthy um, school like that. Um, I think that uh, there are certainly uh, uh, possibilities that we can do with pilots. Uh, but many of the nonprofits that we have are nonprofits because they are on a shoestring. Uh, religious institutes um, at all kinds of uh, helpful groups do not have the funding uh, to be able to be squeezed um, by pilot.
Alan, do you have a thought on this?
Uh, just that we, uh, it's very, very hard if the law doesn't allow us to create any kind of leverage uh, to increase funding. I, I think it's uh, a lot of moral suasion. Uh, the, the larger institutions run as businesses. Uh, they uh, they are unwilling or uh, to uh, to pay more because they have their own budgetary priorities. Um, so I think this is a very, very difficult area. But um, we can always do, we can always try to do better, but it is hard. I agree with that.
Yeah, so I have a different thought on this. It's I, I agree with Council Danberg. Um, my thought is when we had the sale of Mount Alvernia and I started thinking, I actually learned that um, in the law today, if I, you know, today, uh, schools and uh, and golf courses get a similar sort of tax break uh, on property taxes, uh, golf courses actually are required to give right of first refusal if they go to sell property. And I would like to see something like that uh, included on our other uh, institutions, our educational and religious institutions. Um, boy, does it, I, I look at Mount Alvernia and wonder, we could have gotten a great school there. We could have gotten some open space. We would have maintained the, the woods that are there and might have been better stored for that. Thank you.
I have a comment, if I may.
Very quickly.
Yes, um, Council Bobbin just hit on a very important point. Our, right now, our golf courses, of which we have three private golf courses and one public in the city of Newton, um, get a uh, seventy-five percent tax break. Uh, they are among the, the wealthiest institutions uh, in the city. Uh, and they could easily pay uh, more in tax. I am looking into what is called Chapter sixty-one B, which is um, uh, golf courses and the tax breaks that they get and whether uh, the, this nineteen seventy-nine rule um, can still stand up today.
Uh, Alicia?
I would agree, I would, I would agree with that, by the way.
Okay, good. A- Alicia, do you have a thought on this?
I would just, you know, add to it that I just think that right of first refusal on property, if we've, you know, I'm all for supporting our religious and our educational institutions, but if they're going to have a major property or even a minor property, you know, the, the city would pay a fair, you know, a fair amount, but be given an opportunity to purchase the property first uh, for the benefit of the whole city. Thank you.
Uh, okay, what can Newton counselors do to amp up the pressure on national grid to speed up and carry out a repair of gas leaks that are across the city? And uh, we should start with Alan this time.
I'm, I'm afraid I have no solution to that. I'm not as familiar with that issue as I would like to be. And so I would listen to people who have expertise in this area and uh, follow their lead, um, or at least get their advice about ways in which we can uh, you know, uh, leverage our situation with national grid uh, for them.
There's a, there's a related question I can ask you in your, the remaining time, and that is you support banning future nat- uh, natural gas hookups?
Yes, I do.
Okay, Alicia?
Okay, so the gas companies have us over a barrel. They're controlled at the state level. Uh, several years ago, they uh, a gas system enhancement plan was developed. Um, and if you look at the fine details and the analysis afterwards, it is, it will cost us four times the big dig to replace all of our gas infrastructure, or leaky gas infrastructure um, at a time when we're twenty-five years away from being, needing to be off natural gas altogether and all fossil fuels. So I think, you know, the plan that we have now is that we need to work with our state legislature, late, state legislators um, to work on a gas system migration plan. We need to migrate off of gas and the fact that we'd be spending hundreds of millions of dollars every year that goes right back to the ratepayer uh, to put infrastructure in that won't be utilized in twenty-five years. Um, it seems crazy.
Vicky?
And foolish.
I can only add to that. Um, everything that um, that, that we've heard is, is um, right on target. Um, what we need to do is, is have a planned abandonment of our uh, gas system, not um, n- not a relining plan so that we can use it for another hundred years. Uh, we've got to get off natural gas. We've got to get off fossil fuels. Um, and the leaks under the street are killing our trees. Uh, they, they are uh, costing us uh, environmental damage that, that uh, is well documented. Uh, and I think that, that uh, we need to just uh, find a way uh, to every year, uh, abandon more and more. We should not allow any more uh, new gas hookups to be done.
Um, changing the theme again, uh, it's been touched on lightly. How do you plan to further involve residents in the decision-making process? And please be very specific. And Alicia, you are due to go first.
All right, so uh, so yeah, I guess, you know, better communication. You know, I, as a, as a city counselor, work hard to communicate and, and with residents, respond to their emails, send them regular updates, agree to meet, anybody can call me anytime. Um, and certainly, I think, you know, question we got in the league debate was question about making the, the website more uh, more user-friendly so people can get more information. Um, and I think that's, you know, that's one element. But there also is a reason, there's a, there's a reason we're elected and um, you want to involve residents and get their input on on items, but many residents are just living their lives and they want to trust to know that you're going to make good decisions. Um, you know, if they're unable to, to be involved in that, so.
Okay, uh, Alan?
Yes, as I mentioned in the beginning, I think one of the real failures is to engage our citizens, our residents in the decision-making process. Um, I wouldn't assume that people uh, are living their lives and therefore don't care and, and don't care as much and because they're just too busy. When I meet residents in their homes, uh, as soon as we start talking, they're very engaged. They're very concerned. We need to do more outreach. We need to move into the neighborhoods uh, when, especially if there's a big decision to be made, such as the zoning, when so many people were going to be affected or are going to be affected and haven't been involved or informed as much as they could. Um, finally, as I said, that they're
All right, well, you're out of time. I'm sorry. Apologize. Vicky, I think, don't think you've had a chance to weigh in on this.
No, I haven't. Um, we've got our newsletters. Um, many, many people have uh, been reaching out, many, many more of us counselors have been reaching out on a regular basis. I know I have to, um, to all of my um, the, the people that I have emails for. Um, the mayor has a newsletter of thirty-five or it's approaching forty thousand uh, emails now. And this is way better than it was ten years ago in reaching out to people. We need to, we need to do events. Um, every time we have an opportunity to speak to people, we need to get their opinions. Uh, the website needs to be improved um, because it's, it is right now difficult to navigate and it's hard for the public uh, to find uh, topics. We need to put money into it, talk to people and take advantage of social media. Thank you.
The following work is only uh, looking for a yes or no answer on this whole question of communication. Um, back in the day, the city used to send out questionnaires to every household to assess the level of satisfaction or dissatisfaction with different aspects of living in Newton. Would you push actively to resurrect that annual questionnaire? And Alicia, you start.
You just said yes. Is that what you want?
Yep. Alan?
Yes. Yep.
Yes, with a qualification. But yes, but yes.
Vicky?
Oh, absolutely, yes. I, I think that um, that's a wonderful way to reach out to people and I don't know why we ever stopped it.
Okay, um, let's move on to where each one of you gets to pose a question to one of your opponents, and we are going to start with Vicky. Uh, whom do you have a question for?
Oh, um, I think I have a question for um, Council Bobbin. Um, Council Bobbin, you've been a leader on bike stuff since uh, before you got on to uh, the city council. Um, you helped me put the first bike path in, and now you have taken that whole thing and run with it in a wonderful way. Um, what are your plans for the future for bikes and uh, what other transportation um, projects do you want to work on?
So I'm very proud of the work that I've done um, on advocating for safer streets in Newton. You know, for twenty-seven years, really, lot, you know, as a young parent, trying to push a stroller and realizing there are many places where we didn't have sidewalks and introducing myself to the mayor and suggesting that we should start funding sidewalks, just like we fund roads. Um, as a young parent at elementary school, I started Safe Roots to School to promote kids walking and biking to school. And twenty years later, um, I've seen the outcome of that. We have much safer crosswalks with bolder painting and flashing beacons and curb extensions that make drivers slow down and make pedestrians more visible. We have many more students walking and biking to school today. Makes my heart feel good when I go to the h- high schools and see a hundred fifty bikes. Um, and that's, you know, so plans for the future are more of that.
Uh, Alan, whom would you like to put in the hot seat?
I have a question for Vicky. Uh, the current percentage of Newton workers who take, who use public transportation is thirteen percent. One of the uh, stated purposes of the proposed dense home hu- housing near public transportation is to reduce reliance on cars. Since the percentage is that low now, why would you expect the transportation systems that continuously break down and deliver unreliable service with no realistic expectation of improvements would attract new riders and reduce the number of cars generated by thousands of new housing units?
Well, first of all, I would agree with you that we've got a lot to, uh, a lot of work to do on our transportation systems. If I were queen and I could uh, take care of that myself, it would be taken care of tomorrow. Um, that not being the case, um, what we have, one of the things that we have learned is that traffic uh, in Newton does not come from housing. It comes from commuters. Um, and uh, the, the um, percentage is something like, it's, it's over eighty percent that goes down, for example, Center Street uh, that goes to the Pike. Uh, we did an origin and destination study in that, and it showed those numbers. Um, on, on, um, what was the rest of the question? I'm sorry, I'm getting off on a tangent.
Uh, you know, you lost me.
You
I, I'm suggesting that with the thousands of new units, there will be literally thousands of new cars. And, and it's true that a significant percentage of people are coming through the city. But if we do that, there will be thousands of new cars within the city and people will need to use their cars uh, driving around, including those main thoroughfares that you mentioned. That's my concern.
Just in, as quickly as I can, um, the, the existing uh, multifamily dwelling uh, buildings that we have built are a third to a, to a half empty because many of the people that are
because many of the people that are moving in there are empty nesters, moving in, uh, go, going down to one car or no cars, um, and are able to do all of their uh, their uh, necessary purchasing and, and living uh, activities right around where they live. They prefer to not use a car. Uh, so what I'm saying is that when we, if we build within our villages, we are going to find, I am sure, that uh, people are going to live a lot more car-like uh, than we thought they were. And I think that that one point two five or even one point oh ratio for how many uh, units to um, uh, how many uh, parking spaces per unit is way too high. I think it's closer to point seven.
Uh, Alicia, I don't think you've posed a question.
I haven't. So my question is for Councilor Danberg. Um, you know, it was good to hear you today talk uh, in such support of moving Newton forward on housing, um, especially affordable housing. Uh, what do you see being your primary uh, new project focusing on uh, in the coming term?
Well, I'm going to continue to work on a pet project of mine and that is reducing uh, plastics. Um, I chair the uh, uh, plastics reduction working group and I have the pleasure of working with a number of people from uh, from the city. Uh, and we have just uh, gotten through on a unanimous vote that I was very proud of and I think all of us should be very proud of, uh, to reduce some, a number of single-use plastics uh, in the city. And the next thing I'm going to go for is uh, single-use plastic water bottles because I think they are polluting our atmosphere. They are ruining our, our, our environment and our world. And there is absolutely no need uh, to have all of these plastic bottles in our lives.
Okay. Uh, according to the plan, uh, we're supposed to go into closing remarks, but since this issue has been raised, very quickly, I'd like to have Ellen and Alicia just weigh in on plastic reduction and how you envision uh, that being implemented across the city. How far would you go, Ellen?
Well, again, uh, uh, of course, plastics are terrible for our environment, uh, especially single-use. So I would, um, I would support any more aggressive uh, limitations on that. Again, I, I'm not an expert on this and I would want to listen to people who are experts and be thoughtful and get uh, get feedback from uh, residents and businesses as to how to proceed. But yes, in principle, we need to make a huge effort to do that.
And Alicia, I see you nodding. So uh, do you need to weigh in on this any further?
Sure. I'm always, I always want a chance to weigh in on things. So uh, Councilor Danberg did an amazing job, her team, in working through those issues with the businesses and with uh, residents who are very passionate about removing plastics. I think I just read uh, that Massachusetts has one of the lowest uh, return rates on, on plastic bottles because of our uh, our low uh, um, uh, bottle redemption. And uh, so I think it probably might be a combination of maybe looking back at uh, putting in a uh, a um, a deposit on plastic bottles and then moving people forward. I can tell you, my own children have, have told me of the importance of reducing plastics um, and have got my husband off of drinking out of plastic water bottles uh, for their own health, let alone the health of the uh, of the, of our oceans and environment.
Okay. So plastics are out in Newton. Uh, we're going to go to closing remarks and we're going to go in alphabetical order by first name. So Ellen, you go first.
In this election, you, the residents of Newton, have a clear choice to support or not support the current zoning plan. This plan will allow the development by right of many thousands of new housing units beyond even the state requirement. That development will transform our city in many negative ways that our current council has not prepared for. More cars, more traffic, inadequate parking, stress on our infrastructure, unpredictable impact on our schools, loss of our local small businesses and reduced green space and tree canopy. It will not provide truly affordable housing for lower-income households. If you have concerns about the direction of the city and want someone who will listen and represent a different approach, then on Tuesday, November seventh or before, vote for me, Alan Lovavitz. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan. Alicia?
Thank you. Uh, thank you everyone to tuning in. I'm proud to call Newton home. This is where my husband Jeff grew up and where we've raised our three children and where we hope our children will be able to afford to return to raise their own children. But that won't happen unless we build some more housing. Um, and this is where my husband and I plan to live for the rest of our lives. But again, that is dependent on being able to build more housing that will be senior-friendly. Um, as council, I've worked with and listened to residents across the city and we share many of the same priorities for Newton's future. To support seniors and excellent Newton public schools, to take bolder action on the climate and make Newton more resilient to extreme weather, invest in our open spaces in our streets and create our more vibrant and livable village centers and make Newton more affordable um, and preserve history while allowing Newton to modernize and meet the challenges ahead. I'm Alicia Bowman and I ask for your vote on November seventh.
I'm Vicki.
Thank you. And I will try and be short. Uh, first of all, I want to thank the area councils for uh, hosting this and, and um, uh, Marjorie for moderating. Um, policy makes a big difference um, in our daily lives. Uh, nothing can be done by one person alone. It, it's really a councillor's job to be a collaborative problem solver. We have to listen. We have to look at all sides and we have to search to get what we think is the best solution. The choices that we make will impact our schools, our businesses and whether we thrive as a community. Uh, in nineteen thirty-six, I think it was Roosevelt said, you need to reform in order to preserve. That's really still true today. So let's be a welcoming community and work together to get there. I ask for your vote on November seventh. Thank you very much.
And thank you. And thank you to all three of you candidates for setting aside the time to reflect on these very important issues facing the city. And thanks for your willingness to put yourself forward uh, and, and run for public office. It's an important service to the community. Uh, thanks also to the area council who planned the logistics for this series of debates and then they planned again and then they planned again. And now we are at the end of this two-day electoral debate marathon. Uh, it's been a pleasure to uh, to moderate. I've learned a lot. And I thank also uh, the audience for paying attention. So remember, get out and vote on November seventh or do it in advance. Thanks so much. Bye-bye.
Thank you, Marjorie.
Thank you.
Bye, everyone.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.